The time is now 5:01. We will now call this regular public meeting of the Board of Trustees of Umbly Independent School District to order pursuant to Governor Abbott's temporary suspension of open meetings laws issued on March 16, 2020. This meeting will be conducted by video and audio conference call. No board members or members of the public will be physically present. Members of the public may access the meeting by going to the link on the front of the Umbly ISD website. Moving to our first item of business is closed session. A closed session of the board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in an open session. A closed session of the board will now be held. The time is 5:02 PM. Alright guys, let's go to closed session. The time now is 5:28 PM. Stephanie, can we start?
Two minutes.
Do we have to wait?
Let's chat for a little bit about non-board related topics.
Okay, well, we've got one minute to chat with. Let's make sure we get everybody signed on.
Mike Seal, do you want to test your audio?
I logged in a little bit earlier and tested it with Karen.
Excellent. I was just thinking.
Yeah. Yeah, it would have made for a little longer meeting if I had to do it by telephone.
Yeah, we had building and planning this morning and Mike was giving a great presentation and we're all going.
Can't hear him.
I was gonna do it in sign language, but I didn't know if any of y'all could understand it and I can't speak it, so it was gonna be an issue.
Okay, guys, it is. The time now is 5:30 and we will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. Reminder that the meetings of the board are open to the public, but are not a public, not a meeting of the public. The Umbly ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The board does receive the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore lengthy discussions are not always necessarily necessary on every agenda item, but as a board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. Forgive me, y'all. Okay, we now come to questions and comments by patrons or employees of the district regarding agenda items or any other matters. As we do not have any public comment tonight, I am going to forego the lengthy information on responsibility, so we will move to the consent agenda. Moving to item five, our consent agenda, which would be...
Four.
Four A. I'm sorry. Four A, budget transfers and amendments, including an increase for technology, equipment, and staff development for at-risk students. Four B, board authorization for inter-local agreements. Mr. Scarfo, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam President. A motion, budget transfers and amendments, including an increase for technology, equipment, and staff development for at-risk students.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I apologize, Ms. Morrison. If I could interrupt briefly, I believe the issue was whether to approve the full consent agenda. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct, yes.
And no items were pulled, Ms. Morrison?
No items were pulled. We have four A and four B.
Mr. Scarfo, if you would, would you be able to amend your motion?
Yeah, I amend the motion on the floor to change it to four C, approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion.
Okay.
I have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. I have seven positives, Ms. Martin. Therefore, the motion passes. Okay, we move to information items. We now move to our budget workshop.
Thank you. So I have a few. I'm going to attempt to... Oh, I'm gonna share first, Mike. I have a couple introductory slides that I wanted to share with you before we move right into Mike's presentation on the budget. So we'll see if I can figure this out. Okay, do you see it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. Okay, so as we start the budget workshop tonight, I wanted to just share at a high level a couple of things. You all probably remember last year when we had the fortunate House Bill III approval, a little bit late in the year, but still it was a very positive experience for Umbly ISD. And as a result, we were able to give pretty significant raises. Our teachers' raise was about 7%. We had other employee groups that ranged from four to our police that were above seven in an effort to right the market there. And so we entered the second half of that biennium, which would have been a very favorable budget season for us again. However, the impact of coronavirus on the Texas economy is something that we're all paying attention to right now and making sure that as we move through fiscal year 21, which is next year, that we are keeping a watchful eye on fiscal years 22 and 23, as preliminary data are showing a pretty significant decrease in tax revenues to the state, as well as an oil situation where for a period of time, we were actually paying people to take our oil away. And those two things together are something that could well have an impact on our budgets moving forward. So one of our key goals in this budget season, as you'll see in Mike's presentation, is to keep the Umbly ISD family whole. We have a very incredible culture in our district and we want to make sure that we maintain that through our preparations for the budgets for '21, '22, and perhaps even '23. At the same time, we have to make sure that we are paying attention to student growth in the district. The recent pass of study at the last board meeting showed that we have a great problem in Umbly ISD, and that is families want to live here and they want our children in our schools. And I can't blame them because there is no better group of teachers, leaders, support staff anywhere than here in this school district. And so we continue to grow. And so one of our goals in this budget will be absolutely to fund the growth of students and the teachers they will need to learn and grow in Umbly ISD. In addition to that growth is, you probably remember that Texas has changed its approach to special education to some extent, and with that approach, we have seen a pretty significant increase in special education. We are projecting approximately 50,000 more student minutes that we will serve next year. And that equates to, when you work it all out down to the details, to approximately 29 teachers and 22 paraprofessionals that you will see in this budget. We're going to be open Centennial Elementary School, and I am proud to tell you that Jonathan Fry took this photo of Centennial Elementary School today with a drone, so you get to see the very latest and greatest of that particular campus that will be opening this August, even the guys on the roof, if you can see that. And you can also see their mascot, if you will, Centennial Express, celebrating the history of Umbly ISD, the railroad, and also paying attention to the fact that they are future Bulldogs at Summer Creek. In addition to those areas of growth, special education, and opening Centennial Elementary, we are absolutely paying attention to our highest priorities as a district and making some, continuing to make progress on the things that really have mattered to us and continue to matter to us, things that we can afford in those categories that we believe are in the best interest of the district. So those categories include safety, which has been a high priority for us for the last three years, quality data-driven leadership, and I always use that word quality because the data we use are quality. It's easy to do cheap and easy data. It's much more difficult to have quality assessments, quality data, use that to drive your decision-making. That's what we're doing. And finally, personalized student success, which has been a priority for us all through the high stakes testing movements and all those kinds of things. We've always cared about individual children, the whole child. We want to continue down that path and make sure each and every student has what they need to be successful, including pretty significant improvements in the way that we approach college career, military readiness, counseling, current technology education, you're gonna see some of those, and many other areas that are really high priorities for our students. So this is sort of just a high-level summary of what you're about to see in this budget and why. And, oh, and there's also this item of what I call cost of doing business and what you'll remember that wasn't long ago, we dealt with Amelda. Our property insurance people haven't forgotten either. And as a result of that, we have some increases in things that we do and have to do as part of our business. The increase to property tax insurance, contracted services, and the software increases for the licenses that we use in our school district for our students and staff. So those are all things that we're moving forward, but at the same time, we want to keep the family whole. We want to make sure that we maintain all the wonderful opportunities children have in this district and all the wonderful staff we have in this district by being very responsible in our budgeting process and understanding that fiscal year '22 and '23 could be more challenging and that we need to prepare for those while we do the budget for '21. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mike, who's going to go into greater detail on all aspects of this budget.
Doctor, did you unshare your screen?
It doesn't? It says...
I think you did.
Okay.
So let's see if I can get mine going here. I'm sorry, let me... I shared it. There we go. So our theme here for this year's budget is past, present, and future. As Dr. Fagan indicated, we want to make sure that we maintain the momentum that we've built in the past years, that we continue to make advances in areas of technology, fine arts, and things like that, that we want to take care of. Our present needs, present needs being for the '21 year, but that we take a hard look at preparing for the future. Being aware that if we go in and add a lot of stuff and a lot of new expenses in the current year that aren't absolutely necessary, that they may, they might end up costing us jobs or costing us programs in the future. So we really, in a normal year, our budget would increase by $16 to $20 million. This year, we believe we're gonna propose a budget that's gonna increase by $10 to $11 million. A lot of these things, Dr. Fagan has already discussed. We want to maximize current budget capacity carryforward. Now, I need to apologize to Mr. Scarfo. He sent me a question about this terminology this afternoon. Budget capacity carryforward.
Mike?
And our budget capacity for this year.
Mike, can I... This is key.
Budget capacity for this year is...
Yeah, your slides aren't...
I'm sorry.
Your PowerPoint's not going through the slides.
Um...
Yeah. It's... You're still on the first page.
Do you have two screens?
I do.
You had to share the other one.
If you push the present button up at the top...
Hang on a second. Boy, I am the master of technology. I'm going to stop sharing. And I'm going to... Boy, I've really booted it up now. Talk amongst yourselves.
Mike, that looked like PowerPoint, yes?
You just need to share your second screen.
Okay, I've gotta figure out how to do that.
Mike, it should show up as screen two.
There we go.
Are y'all able to see that now? Now, or is it the same thing?
No, it looks... Advance to the next slide.
Push it down.
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright. So when we talk about the budget capacity we have this year, we were conservative in putting our budget together last year because we really didn't have a good handle on what House Bill III was gonna do in terms of revenue. So we funded what we needed to do. We managed to come up with about a $4,000 raise for our teachers. And we funded a lot of nice advances, but we maintained budget capacity. We didn't commit all of the funds we had available to us for recurring expenditures. That brought forward to us, I'll talk in real round terms, something in the neighborhood of $20 million. We are because, so if we didn't have any enrollment growth, we would be able to expand our recurring budget this year by about $20 million and still have a balanced budget. We do have enrollment growth, and that's gonna bring in another, somewhere in the neighborhood of $8 to $9 million. So our total capacity, and we'll see this a little later in the slides, our total capacity is about $29 million that we have available to fund things we're gonna do this year and, as much as possible, the remainder of that, we would carry forward to be capacity that we could use for the '21, '22 year. So again, our goal, our number one goal, and we know that we can do both of these, are to maximize the recurring budget capacity carryforward while assuring that net compensation for all employees, including stipends and insurance premium deductions, will be no less than 2019 and 2020. So as a minimum, we want to make sure that our employees have a larger net take-home or as large a net take-home as they have in the current year. We want to fund modest salary adjustments for approximately 300 employees who are assuming significant additional responsibilities. And I can tell you that those increases average a little bit less than $750. So these aren't, we're not giving life-changing increases to employees. Solicit a high deductible health insurance option for all employees, targeting reduced premiums and improved coverage. We believe that we will be coming to the board in June with a proposal. We have two proposals in hand, one more that will be in hand by tomorrow, and another one that will be in hand by the cutoff date, which is, I believe, next Tuesday. We'll pull a committee together to look at those options, decide which is the best optional plan to offer our employees, and we will bring a recommendation to the board. Remember that this will run right alongside our current TRS plan, so employees can choose between the two. We want to maintain all current staff positions. As Dr. Fagan said, we want to keep the family together. We don't want to start cutting programs. We don't want to start increasing class size. We want to fund staffing and supplies to serve approximately 1,000 additional students. Fund staffing and supplies and operating expenditures for Centennial Elementary School. Fund improvements to dyslexia counseling and 504 services. Fund additional staff to address extraordinary growth in special education services. Fund unavoidable expense increases, such as increased flood insurance premiums and increased appraisal fees and subscriptions and so forth. And fund modest advances in other areas critical to advancing student success and safety. And Dr. Fagan will be talking more about those areas as we get a little later in the Any question about any of these bullet points? If not, so Dr. Fagan is going to go through and talk about these areas that we are committing extra funds to and the reasons, kind of the topic or the goal for committing those funds.
So several of these things were already in progress before. For instance, Crisis Go is our replacement for Raptor. As you know, we tested Raptor pretty significantly at the AHS mock drill, didn't find its performance to be exactly what we were looking for, and so we have made a transition to Crisis Go for our software. And we're excited about that, moving it forward. The next one is all about health and safety of our students. We would like to add the folks that will, I don't know the right words, collect and supervise the physicals and all of the concussion protocols, heat protocols, lightning protocols, et cetera, for all of our middle school athletic and fine arts programs, as well as our high school fine arts programs. In an effort to do that, we need additional trainers at all of our high schools to take that on. The next one is about expanding our wireless. There's a lot of conversation in the state about the digital divide, where some students have access to high-speed internet while others may or may not. And we want to make sure that our elementary schools are equipped so that families can be on campus, in the parking lot, in a car, sitting on a blanket, on the playground, whatever, and have access to our expanded wireless system, so that everybody inside Umbly ISD is in close proximity to quality internet if they would like to do that. You remember that we handed out about 3,500 laptops in an effort to make sure all students were able to access the learning fourth quarter. And so we want to make sure that we continue to work and ensure that there is opportunity for all students in the district that is easily accessed in their neighborhoods. The other part of expanding wireless for us is that when we are outside on fire drills or a variety of other evacuation scenarios, and we want to be able to access student roles through Crisis Go, et cetera, expanded wireless allows our teachers and staff to have the bandwidth they need to access all of that safety information. So it's a twofold, double-bang-for-the-buck item there. We got two different radio grants. We're also in the process of upgrading our transportation radio system as part of our overall communication safety plan. And so the district actually has a very small piece of matching money to put into this upgrade because we have two different, very significantly sized grants, and our piece of that is small, just a small matching part. It's a great piece of information for us and a great news story because we thought we'd have to pay for all of that, and we're not going to have to, so it's good. Cybersecurity, know before, you all know this, the universe has changed dramatically in the last legislative session, in addition to cybersecurity training for all of us. There's a great deal more conversation about making sure that we are constantly updating our systems and paying attention to our software packages, so that we are engaging in a lot more cybersecurity than in the past. And so this particular program will allow us to do that and meet the requirements from that past legislation.
Dr. Fagan, I have a question.
Sure.
First, with the expanded Wi-Fi, what is gonna be built in to continue to protect the system? Because that's, I mean, that's great. I get why we do it, makes a lot of sense, but you're also opening the gate. It came to me putting a sign in my yard with my Wi-Fi password to my home network. So are we putting money into make security even more robust than it is today?
Dustin could answer this more specifically than I can, but we obviously have different logins for different users, and those logins have different security features. So if you're outside of one of our high schools right now, you could log in as Umbly ISD guest, but you would have to go through all the sign-in protocols for that. Whereas if I'm next to one of our high schools outside, I can log in as me, not a guest feature, and have a lot more access to features within the district because my security settings are different than somebody who just pulls up and is outside. So we have that inherent in the system right now, because we do have a lot of visitors to our campuses, whether they're at a basketball game or whether they're in the auditoriums or in the cafeteria for a parents' night or an ROTC event. So we have to manage that as we speak right now with different security settings for different users who use different logins. If you don't have a certain password sequence, you can't get in to the parts of the system that I can access, but the guest part is very limited access. Next, oh, I guess it's still me, huh, Mike? Let's see. In addition to the safety pieces, you all are well aware that we have had a real focus on finding out what it is our students want to know and be able to do for their futures, whether it's college career or military. We want to give them opportunities for career exploration early in elementary school, where they can really start to think about different kinds of careers, their own individual strengths, their own individual challenges, and then starting to align those things that they love, as well as their own strengths and talents, to areas they may want to further develop in middle and high school. We've also surveyed our students and asked them, what are some current technical pathways that we don't currently have that you'd like, or what programs would you like to see expanded? Some of those expansions include Cisco Networking. Vet Tech will be a brand-new program for us that our students are very interested in, as well as more offerings in health science. So these are some of the areas that we have asked our students what they want, and now we are working to fulfill those desires and those needs, those class requests, with those additional teachers and programs with a few... The equipment supplies is also in this budget. It's a minor cost, but still all part of adding these programs for the students based on the survey data that we have. We are adding that senior director of college career and military readiness, really aligned to this concept of personalized student success, enhancing our counseling program pre-K through 12, focused on the individual needs of our students, and then supporting them and creating their pathways all the way through to whatever that goal is. We've added a program called Naviance. We actually are sort of a beta version group for Naviance. Terry Perkins sits on their group, kind of like on their board, and provides them with support and ideas of things we need and want, because we are on the cutting edge of this personalized student success work. And we're bringing Naviance more into our system so that our students do have that personalized approach to counseling. We're also bringing together CATE and the other areas, Advanced Academics. So no matter a student's path, no matter their gifts, their talents, their interests, their loves, all of that will be coming together to provide them with a really personalized opportunity in our system. Finally, the fine arts wheel that we've done at Lakeland has been a tremendous success, and we are looking to expand that next year to North Belt Elementary School. These are some other just really specific, and they're obviously not big-ticket items, but really important to us as we continue to move the district forward. We've had a lot of interest in our new mariachi offerings at Umbly Middle School, Sterling Middle School, Umbly High School, and Lakeland Elementary School. As such, it's time for us to have a teacher to support all of those programs in the entire Umbly High School feeder. Our dyslexia continues to expand. We would like to have at least one person, if not more, in the district who is also bilingual and speaks Spanish, to support our dyslexia program. We have tested a 504 facilitators approach in the district this year. That has been also very successful for 504 families, to have a facilitator who really understands the 504 process. to have a facilitator who really understands the 504 process and can work with the family to meet the individual and unique needs of their children, coaching all members of that child's team, whether it be teachers, counselors, administrators, et cetera, and facilitating that process. So we piloted that this year. We feel it's been extraordinarily successful. Next year, we would like to expand it to every 504 child, grade six through 12. Eventually, we'd like to have it K through 12, but this is what we feel like we can afford at this time. And so that is our next-level recommendation. House Bill 3 requires reading academies. Ann Johnson and her team have already been putting those together. And so that, as you know, we've done our own literacy assessment. We've done our own math assessment. We've built the UMBLE bundle, which are the instructional materials that fulfill the needs and meet the needs of our students and staff. We certainly don't want our folks now to go off to training somewhere else, learn different materials and different assessments. So we're taking all the pieces unique to UMBLEISD that we know are quality, and we're building those right into the required reading academies. We're also building in the dyslexia component so that, again, our staff doesn't have a fragmented, disjointed experience in this state-mandated training that's really extensive. It's not just a one-and-done kind of class. It's multiple meetings, multiple sessions, in-class coaching, in-class observations, mentoring. It's very extensive training. So we're very excited to build the work that we're doing anyway right into that program. I mentioned NAVYANCE earlier. We are also adding to our instrument rotation, our fine arts instruments. You probably remember a number of years ago, we were a little behind in that we didn't have a computer rotation in place. We now have that in place, and it's serving us well. It's time for us to do the same with instruments rotation. We'd grown up overnight as a little district. They got to be a big district, and we only had about $100,000 set aside for instruments for five high schools and their feeder middle schools. That's just simply not adequate. And so we want to make sure that our teachers are not having to fundraise for the core instruments we're going to need in our programs. So we'd like to improve our rotation there, build it into the budget slowly over time. And finally, an area that is a challenge for many children is children who are homeless and children who are in the foster care system. And we want to make sure that we have a counselor who specializes in both of those scenarios, can support those children with the unique aspects of their lives that many other children don't experience. Our goal is to meet their basic needs through this counselor and so that we know that they're ready to learn when they come to our campuses.
Dr. Fagan?
Yes.
Good question. And I apologize. I normally would ask these questions offline, but this stuff came pretty late last night, and I was working today. So I apologize. We'll first go back to the 504 facilitators. Are we, do we have something similar? Because I think that's a great idea because you get through it so much quicker. People who know what they're doing administratively and takes the weight off the people who have been forced to do that now, the counselors. For sped students, which is different from 504 students, do we have a similar type of approach where there are facilitators rather than helping parents kind of navigate the system? Do we have that in place?
I know that Henry and Terry have been working on this topic. So if either one, I think, I'm not sure if Henry's on in a capacity where he can speak, but if Terry or Roger want to.
I don't need an answer right this moment, but that's just something I'd like to know about. And then the last one on the, for the foster and homeless children, is that enough, one person? I mean, it seemed to me like you might need more, but we have a little bit of capacity from what Mr. Steele was telling us. So I don't know. Do we need more? Is that enough? I'm happy to say yes.
We've had a funded position that we have sort of piloted this idea with. And Matt Smith, who is the elementary counseling coordinator, who has this person that works for him, that grant is coming to a close. We would like to continue it, and this is what he has recommended, was this one position. So certainly, if there is additional need, we'll be open to that.
Henry can speak, Dr. Fagan, if you need him.
Okay, well, I don't know if Henry wanted to speak briefly to the art process and the facilitation goals he has in that, or if he would rather put that together later.
I can go and speak to it now if you'd like me to.
That'd be great.
Ms. Garfield, for the art meetings, we have an LSSP or a diagnostician or a SLP, speech language pathologist, to lead those meetings the same way as they would, as a 504 facilitator would lead those meetings. So we have personnel that leads those meetings and contacts parents as needed.
Okay. And under this notion of quality data-driven leadership, a couple of meetings ago, you all got to see some of Warren Roan's fantastic work on this particular topic where we are taking quality data that we have finally really developed that gives us cohort information regarding comparing children to themselves instead of comparing one group of third graders to a different group of third graders, which doesn't make as much sense. And so in an effort to continue down this path and improve in all areas of quality data-driven leadership, we're requesting a data analyst who will help us with a lot of the backside data in communications regarding survey data, as well as HR regarding evaluation data and other needs in both of those. They are coming together to share that position so that we are more capable of presenting our information, our goals and our growth the way that you saw we did with elementary reading, as well as our PSAT data for our students who go from eighth to ninth grade. To that NPSAT data, we are expanding that, and we will continue to pay for that for all of our students through 11th grade. So that is in here, as well as the software increases required to show those data in the very best way possible, sort of that notion of data visualization. We're continuing down the path of creating a point system to understand the needs of our students and then assigning personnel and spending dollars appropriately so that we're making sure that students have what they need and staff have the support that they need also. And then finally, in our cost-of-doing-business category, I mentioned this earlier. Amelda has raised our property casualty insurance a bit, and as well as there's several other software increases. Those are kind of things where if you have a piece of software and it's a quality part of your system, the price goes up, you do a reevaluation of that software to ensure that it is what you want for another year. And if it is, then of course you have to absorb the costs and the increases. And so we're taking those on so those departments' budgets are intact moving forward. And in the, and there are some departments who have said, hey, we can pay for that one piece next year. We'll take that on. But where they're large, we want to make sure that we're handling that.
With that, we'll move into some dollar amounts. Let me say a couple of things about the way we've rolled out information to you. In the past, at this time, we would have presented these elaborate sheets we call budget initiative sheets. They would have contained a lot of the narrative that Dr. Fagan has presented to you, along with the costs associated with those. This COVID season of budgeting has just not been a real challenge, not a challenge to put a good budget together, but it just takes a whole lot more time. And frankly, it's time that we don't have available to us. You will have noticed that I think Rick and Dr. Fagan, and I, all three were working towards 10 o'clock last night to get something to you this morning. We would have loved to have gotten it to you. My goal generally would be the Friday before. We're going to do our best before we get to the budget adoption meeting. We're going to do our absolute best to get things to you several days before so you can absorb it. But this is not a new pattern we're setting for future budgets. It's just a monumental effort to get to this point this year. So you will have a lot of information coming to you to add flesh to the bones between now and the final budget adoption. As I mentioned, we have about $29.5 million of budget capacity that we can spend this year. Or if we don't commit at all to continuing expenses, we can roll a good part of that capacity over to the next span.
Mike, can I say one thing about that?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, really, we don't have hardly any information at all about the fiscal situation of the state and its impact on K-12 at this point. However, we are being told by folks who study that information that we need to be cautious in our budget development. We need to pay attention to the fact that there could be budget reductions. Other states have already reduced their K-12 budgets by pretty significant percentages. So we want to keep our family whole and be ready to weather any kind of storm using capacity that we move forward, plus any carryforward amount we need in an effort to not have to reduce anything that we have. So I just want to make sure people really understand the concept of keeping the family together and preparing for what could be a difficult fiscal year '22 for K-12 education in Texas. Unless we see a V-shaped economic recovery, we certainly are hoping for that. But we just don't have enough information at this point, and all the experts are pointing to a cautious budget season.
So Mike?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a quick question. Of this $29.5 million, did you say that it was at about $9.5 million of that was our carryforward from last year's?
No, about 20 million is carryforward from last year. And let me put that into perspective. Every year that I propose a budget, my intention is to underspend that budget by $10 to $12 million every year so that we start every year with that kind of capacity. So we adopted a conservative budget this last year and said, we don't really know what all extra money we're going to get from the state. We budgeted on the low end, believing that we were only going to carry forward $10 to $12 million. The more we got into the state funding, the more we realized it was going to be more like $20 million we were carrying forward. So a portion of that, not, I don't want to say it was unintentional, but it was just like this year. We don't know what's going to happen in year '22. Nobody understood because the legislation was passed so late. Nobody understood really what our revenue flow was going to be. So $20 million approximately rolling forward from a prior year. And then somewhere between $8 and $10 million based on enrollment growth for this coming year.
Mike, do you want to make a mention at this point about property tax collection and the fact that that is not, I mean, that's something that we have to pay attention to and make sure we're being responsible for?
Sure, there are a couple of big things I'll mention. On the negative side, we know that property tax collection is not going to be as good this year as it has been in prior years. Historically, we collect 100% of our taxes. I believe that we're fortunate because we are heavily residential in our property tax base. The districts that are going to get hammered are districts where they've got a lot of, a lot of their revenue is tied up in commercial property and in businesses that may not be able to pay their taxes. They may shutter their stores and not reopen. But it will be, there will be an impact. Even more importantly, it's very likely that property value growth is going to go flat for the next couple of years. This year, we're fine because the values were set prior to COVID. Next year, there are people that are saying they believe that it can take us two or three years to recover in property value growth, starting in the year '22, having it flatten out or even dip before it climbs. And you saw that back in 2011 when we had an economic downturn. The other side of this coin, though, is the, the other side of that same coin is that there is legislation in the Federal House of Representatives that is trying to push some money down to the states to support education. If that happens, then that could be an offset to this. If we had a tremendous V-shaped recovery, if the feds pushed money down to the state level, then we could look and see that our budget cuts either didn't happen or we're not going to be nearly as severe in '22 as we're trying to prepare for. And if that happens, we can come in and go catch up for raises that we didn't give. We can be generous. So it's not like that money goes away. We have it in hand, and we can do some great things with it. Ms. Tumi, you have another question?
Yeah, I was just curious if there was any indication from the powers that be of reassessing, because typically, values are assessed, you know, as of what, January 1st. Is there any indication that there might, that there might be some kind of relief for? Martina's probably the one to answer that one.
Our indication is that the legislation does provide for it.
Right, because it has to be physical damage, not economic damage, Lori. Our board meeting is tomorrow. I think we will be discussing how it looks going forward. But reassessment does not seem like, the reappraisal does not seem like it will be an option.
So now let's look at campus staffing. These numbers are rounded to the nearest $25,000. They look like I rounded them to $100,000, but that's just the way they worked out. Staffing for enrollment growth for roughly 1,000 new students is going to cost the district about $3 million. Staffing for special education excluding Centennial, the special education for Centennial is in the next figure down, is $1.6 million. Staffing for all staff at Centennial Elementary is $1.5 million. And then we're asking for 10 teacher contingency positions because we know as we get closer to opening school, and even in the weeks after that, we'll be surprised where some of the kids show up. So all of that total comes up to $6.7 million in staffing for campuses. Any questions about those? The proposed budget, the other increases outside of staffing for campuses, we'll have an increase to employee benefits and TRS contribution. When you add staff, we have to pay for more insurance contributions. We're also picking up an extra, I think it's a quarter of a percent, that the district has to pay to TRS for our share of TRS. That costs, those together cost us about $925,000. As I mentioned, we have about 300 employees that are going to share a total of about $200,000, which averages less than $750 an employee for employees that are taking on significant additional responsibilities and duties. We have an increase in operating expenditures for Centennial Elementary, covering things like utilities and supplies and so forth. That will cost us about $200,000. We have increases to, and the wording on this seems odd, but I took the title off the other slide. Those things that Dr. Fagan has talked about, those other items that are critical to advancing student success, they total about $2.8 million. To put this into perspective, we had an excess of $20 million of requests that we trimmed down to $2.8 million. And say something about that. I encourage people not to just be goofy in their requests, but if you have, anybody who has something that they believe would be for the betterment of their students, we want to see those requests so they can be stacked up against the other $19.5 million worth of requests so that we can cull it down to what the very best are. So I'm not at all critical of the people who turned in lots of requests that we're not able to approve this year. So the total of those other increases is $4,125,000. If I add the $6.7 million to the $4,125,000, If I add the 6.7 million dollars to the 4,125,000, so the campus staff to the other, that totals 10,825,000 dollars. That is about half of the normal budget increase that we've had since I've been in this district. As I mentioned, we have capacity available of 29,500,000 dollars. And that would leave us with about 18,675,000 dollars worth of capacity that would become our starting point for either offsetting what might be state budget cuts or if the state didn't put any new money into the system to moving forward in 22 and 23. Any questions about what we've presented so far? All right, well, with that, we are at closing comments. Dr. Fagan, do you have anything else that you'd like to say before we answer any questions?
No, just want to to say, you know, obviously, we're hopeful that that 18 million dollars can be used by the district for future positive things and that we have a V-shaped economic recovery and that allows us to continue to benefit from House Bill 3 and all of its components moving forward. But given the amount of caution that officials are are giving to us, we feel like the responsible thing for us is to preserve capacity so that we would not be in a position, if there are reductions handed to us, where we would have to start with cutting people, programs, salaries, or anything like that. It is our goal to keep the Umbly SD family whole. Everyone would receive everything they they got last, last year again this year, including the stipends that we put in place last year. And in addition to that, Mike and his team have gone out to search for another insurance option that would save some of our employees. It could be as much as 200 dollars a month in premium reductions. And so while their their, everything else would be the same, they would see improvements if, depending on the insurance program and plan they chose. So we have actively been pursuing other ways to improve the quality of life of Umbly SD employees, even as we are going through what could be a very difficult few years here of budget. And we just want to be well-positioned to to weather that as a district. And of this, we've, we have been a very financially strong district. We showed that after Hurricane Harvey. And now we're going to demonstrate that exact same thing again, that we are taking a responsible yet hopeful approach and putting our dollars where they matter the most.
With that, any questions or comments from the board before we close this part of the meeting?
I have, hey, Martina.
Um, this is Martina. Yes, I was going to ask, the stipend schedule, are we going to discuss that in the other part of the meeting, or is that a question for now?
What, what question do you have specifically?
I was just wondering what the percentage of increase was. I did see that there were some consolidations, which I think balances things out. But I was wondering the overall impact of the new stipend schedule that we were sent, the proposed stipend schedule.
Is this about folks who work during the breaks? Is that what we're talking about?
Uh, no, like the high school stipend. But fired or there, we received that in our materials.
Yes.
A proposed stipend schedule for 20.
The the total increase we have because of stipend adjustments and payments for new responsibilities. 200,000 dollars.
Yeah, okay, okay. So it's included in that. Okay.
It's all in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Scarfo, you had a question?
Yeah. You may have mentioned this, and I didn't hear it, but on the staffing for enrollment growth, what are we using, the the mid scenario or which would that equate to? Or are we not really using the possible one for this current school year? And just sort of doing our own?
Well, I believe the, and I don't have it in front of me, but we we talk about approximately 1,000 students. I was thinking that the that the mid was about 950. Does that seem right?
Yeah, we've typically grown by about 1,000 students. We don't know if the interest rates on housing will outweigh the chilling effect of the economic downturn. So we're really sort of planning for that same 1,000 student increase. And we'll just have to see what it looks like. This year, we grew by more than that. And so a a bit of a chilling effect because of the economy could put us back in that 1,000 student range. But I do, I think Mike's right, the 950 number is the mid projection, and then we would go from there. And those 10 contingency positions are all part of this growth estimate stuff, as well as special education changes that we don't, you know, sometimes students move in who have significant special education needs. And so that's all part of our preparation for the the next year.
Okay. And then just one last thing, to kind of tie us to this, you'd send an email out, Dr. Fagan, back at the end of April, talking, one of the items you talked about was the carryforward to encourage savings and to try to get away from this, you know, spend their budgets, use it or lose it mentality. I just wonder, though, that's kind of the the polar opposite of zero-based budgeting. Because if you get to the end of the year and money's not, it turned out it wasn't needed, then maybe that's not a program that really needs to be on the boards and something else should happen or it just goes back in and you make the, make the case for something else. I just wonder if, I I understand the the rationale and I agree that that makes sense, but I just wonder if there may be a more efficient way to re repurpose money. Is that, that's in effect what we're talking about, right, if I followed it?
Yeah, well, okay, a couple of things. Number one, unspent budget dollars drop to the bottom line as one-time money. So they don't help us with ongoing capacity. They're like savings account money that you can use on on a, on a one-time purchase of some sort. So our goal is to encourage our department leaders and our campus leaders to know that they can move forward a very small portion, only 15% of their budget into the next year in an effort to create a savings culture where if you want an additional, we've had a lot of conversations about Lakeland and about their instructional spaces between the classrooms and other campuses saying, geez, we'd like to have, you know, a collaborative space for our students that is that children's museum-like experience. How can we do that? So we're trying to create opportunities, very small percentages of budgets, where campuses as well as departments can put some dollars aside and save them from year to year for a larger purchase that they would like to make that's appropriate for one-time money. We've, we felt, we started this before coronavirus, as you mentioned, in April. We still feel culturally that it is the right thing where you, our culture is one where we have very high expectations. We have really quality people and we sort of, we trust and verify the work that they do. But we want to empower them with the tools that that will make them the most successful. And so we think that providing this tool to them will be a positive in impact at all of our campuses and all of our departments. We'd like to pilot that. And, you know, if it turns out not to be the right thing, we certainly would never pull that money back that they've saved, but we can always make a transition. Again, it it doesn't really help us. If the state were to come in and say, we're going to reduce your budget by X percent, that, those dollars would only help us in in one year and then they're gone. Whereas a budget reduction from the state is typically an ongoing budget reduction, which is why we're trying to preserve ongoing capacity. So those are, those are kind of two different things, but we still think a 15% mark is is small enough that we can move forward with the program, support our campuses and our departments in thinking differently about the way that they spend their budgets.
Let me add two other quick comments about that. One is we have a very odd, some very odd spending patterns this year that don't match a normal year. So for me to go back and look at this this year and say, well, the transportation department didn't spend all of their budget this year, let's look at clawing some of that back and giving them a smaller budget next year. It it really wouldn't make sense because if we had had a normal year, they would have need all, needed all of their funds. The second is that those monies that roll over, they're going to be monitored by the deputy and assistant superintendents. So a principal can't go and spend those funds frivolously. And frankly, what I believe is going to happen is they're going to be spending their money, what they consider their money for upgrades that eventually the district would have paid for anyway. So it gives them a little more control and authority over their funds. We are committed that we're going to do this. We probably are going to need to do it for two years to get, see how it works after the COVID year. And then we'll, we'll revisit and decide, does it really benefit our employees and does it really benefit the district?
So have we, one of the things that I'm not sure if it's included within what we've talked about today or not is any potential impact to the budget from potential alternate school ideas coming for next year. I mean, obviously, I know that we can't yet, we don't have enough data to to really nail those down, but I mean, if we have to do anything that's significant online or anything like that, and what impact that could have to the budget, and how are we going to handle that?
So I think that maybe you're referencing the fact that students will likely be allowed to start the year at home, online, and not be on campus. And I I think that the way we're approaching that is those students will still have a a schedule. They will still have a set of teachers, all those kind of things that we're planning on, master scheduling, if you will, no different than we do students who are on campus. So there may be some differences. Transportation allotment miles may be different. I'm not really sure what else there. The other, the other thing that we have done in response to coronavirus is there are some departments that are being disproportionately impacted by the coronavirus and all of its, you know, various permutations. So examples include IT, where we are obviously purchasing more Chromebooks, we're giving those out to students, we're making sure they're under warranty, but we may not get all those back. And there's, there's a lot of things there. So we're leaving the IT budget intact, and they have different set of rules going into the next year. The same is true for Nolan's department with Kenny and all the maintenance and additional expenses that they will have, you know. TEA is talking about dividers for desks. We're talking about sort of Plexiglas dividers on reception desks. All these things are additional expenses. So Mike is leaving Nolan's budget intact, whereas typically, if he hadn't spent certain things, they drop to the bottom line, we pull them into the district fund balance. Those things will stay in Nolan's budget, so he's able to respond and purchase the materials he needs, whether it's thermometers or PPE, or whether it's Plexiglas shields, et cetera, in or in an effort to prepare for the year. So we're doing that. We also have the same happening with athletics and fine arts equipment and uniforms that we're collecting right now. They're going through a sanitation process, then we'll inventory. We know that then we're going to have some replacement that we have to do. So those budgets are being left in place to deal with those things. But beyond that, we don't have enough information really to to have extra expenses or extra savings that we're aware of at this time. We're just going to, all of our sort of preliminary plans, draft plans, super draft, big capital draft for how we might approach the year. Our preliminary coming in on June 1st, but then we have to wait and see what the TEA guidance is, then we'll have to make adjustments accordingly. But, you know, certainly there could be some budget impact in that that we come back to you with.
Okay.
That's another reason why it's so important that we have this big capacity. I would like to think we'll carry 18 and a half million dollars forward, but we may have two or three million dollars worth of surprise expenses that the state springs on us this year. Or we may have a big drop in property ba, property collections, property tax collection. So that's a buffer both to cover the unknown and to start us into 21, 22.
One question I would like to ask, I don't know if there's any additional information, since we had finance committee meeting, I did ask it then. And that is the state. I mean, are they still requiring us to meet all of the unfunded mandates that they put in House Bill 3? Have they shifted on that since we last met?
No, and there's a lot of statewide conversation on this topic. Basically, the conversation goes like this, if the state experiences a shortfall of $3 billion or so and the federal government gives them a billion and a half, where will the other billion and a half come from? The first thing that people start talking about, well, maybe we should delay the teacher incentive allotment. Maybe we should delay the additional school days, extended school year days. Maybe, you know, because there were all of these other little programs that were tacked on to House Bill 3, they all cost money. So the question I think that people are wrestling with is, will the, will those extra program pots of money be reduced first? Or will they go to the core allotment first? And so that, there has been no resolution on that topic. There has been no indication. You see the reading academies moving forward in our budget. There's no, the commissioner's been very clear that the expectation is that reading academies will move forward regardless of state for, state shortfalls. So but he has said that they are, you know, like the transportation allotment for the fourth quarter, they may not give that to us because we haven't been transporting students. So there's a lot of conversation about those things, but there has been no backing off of any of those legislative priorities that we saw with House Bill 3.
Thank you. I'm sure it's fluid, right? Every day. Seems like it, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, hopefully, we, the core funding stays intact before there are any special programs launched.
I agree.
Is there any other discussion? That was a very good presentation, Mr. Seal.
Thank you, ma'am.
Excellent. Uh, moving on to item 5B, employee compensation plan highlights. So we have a presentation there.
Rick?
Yes, we do. So let's go ahead and turn our attention to compensation and where we're headed. I'll share my screen here. Okay, so since, since, can everybody see that slide there?
Yes.
Great. So since December 2019, we have been trying to develop a variety of different compensation models. We've got eight so far in trying to balance their financial needs. I am providing you tonight the most likely model, given what you've seen tonight with regards to the budget. And keep in mind that we anticipate districts also not providing any general increases in their base pay scales, given the impact of CD-19, which will have on their budgets moving forward as well. However, we do have, we do know of some districts, three or four, that are looking at changing their base pay for next year. So we're going to continue to monitor that and, well, just make sure we're competitive with those that surround us as well. So what this particular model, this is basically does is that it's what we call the 0% general increase incentive stipend model, which for the step pay system basically applies no structure adjustments to the entry pay itself, to the starting point. So we will continue with a starting pay of proposing 56,700. And then with regards to the steps in between, there won't be any movement in dollars as far as general pay is concerned, with the exception of year one, where we're going to make a slight adjustment and raising it from 56.7 to 56.8. Now, that has about, roughly about 175 employees. They'll experience 100 dollars more a year. But this has to do with alleviating the compression that exists between the zero year and year one. But this has to do with alleviating the compression that exists between the zero year and year one. So like in 2011, 2012, when we have the major big cuts and ISDs were asked to cut their budgets, this district, as well as every other district, made changes to their step pay scales so that employees would not, in advance, they wouldn't receive a, what they called back then, step pay increase. So in order to do that, you have to just mirror what you're doing today and lay that over for the new school year. And then create a new step, a zero step, that's pretty much identical to year one. Now, again, like I said, we're taking a slightly different approach, but we're just adjusting year one at 56.8, just so to alleviate some of that compression. The midpoint pay system will not have any structure to it as well. There will not be, it'll be a zero general pay increase on all pay scales. And that'll be throughout the exempt and non-exempt pay scales. What will be provided, as mentioned earlier, is the incentive stipend, just like this year, for teacher, librarian, nurse, and counselor, or what I'm calling the House Bill 3 group of $1,400. And then the non-House Bill 3 group, which would be the midpoint employees of $1,000. You'll probably take the same approach that we did this year, in that a half of it would be provided to employees in December, and the other half would be provided to employees in May. For this particular pay scale or proposal model, is estimated at about $7.8 million. And if there was no market move, meaning that our other surrounding districts do about the same thing we're doing and provide a stipend instead of impacting their base pay scales, we're still going to look at an entry pay of six, six in the market. It will still be 1% above the market. All our other steps you'd see there on the right-hand side will be 96% or greater. And then, as I always share with y'all, how much it is, is it additional to close the gap to make all of these here 100%? That would require an additional $2.2 million towards this pay plan. Switching to this slide here is kind of the breakout of what that looks like. You'll see that $100 impact on year one of those 175 employees. That cost comes out to about $17,000. There is no base pay impact on midpoint groups. And we talked earlier about about 300 people receiving some form of equity adjustment because of taking on additional duties. Martina mentioned about the change in the stipend masters that are provided to the board with regards to high school stipends in various areas and in fine arts and athletics. That amounts to about $200, yeah, $200,000. And then the cost impact to the stipends with regards to the $1,400 and the $1,000 going to all those employees is an estimated cost of about $7.5 million. And that is an overall two and a half percent increase to employee. How much that impacts employees? Now, of that 7.5, 4.5 is already budgeted, that Mike talked about earlier in his budget. So the net effect of that is about another $3 million that needs to be picked up by the budget. So that basically is the compensation overview that is trying to continue to keep UMLISD in a good position to compete with our competition and our ability to continue to attract and recruit qualified candidates, as well as retain, retain and reward existing employees. As Liz mentioned as well, is just trying to keep the family home by maintaining compensation for all employees to receive no less than what they received in 2019.
Rick, quick question. Rick, quick question.
Okay.
Your slide said we'd be sixth in the market. How large is that market now? How many, how many schools are we looking at? How many districts, I should say?
Sure, it's, it's a, it's a market of 14 school districts that surround us in the Houston area. It's the same market.
Same 14.
Yeah, same 14, that we still survey and bump ourselves up against.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions about compensation?
You know, I want to go, I guess I want to go back, and this, this ties into the compensation piece. But, you know, and Mr. Scarfo may remember, when we were having the problems in 2008, 2009, 2009, 2010, and then 2011, during that recession, we, we had to cut, and we had, we had to fire all new teachers, is what we had to do, then rehire what we, what we could with the budget cuts that we had back then. And, you know, I'm just concerned, you know, it sounds like we are being prepared, and I like what we're doing here. And I like the, you know, the stipends, the ideas, we're not tying us down to additional money right now until we see how the budget turns out. But, yeah, I'm just, is there anything else we can do? What else have we been hearing? I know we've talked about it, but seeing these numbers and then actually looking at it, being applied to the teachers, I mean, that's really where we're going to, we're going to catch it, catch it short. I mean, Mike, I mean, has the state even looked at this yet? Is it too early? I mean, has any?
I, I think the state is scrambling, trying to figure out what they want to do. This is, if I'm not incorrect, an election year coming up. And I don't think they, even if they know what they're going to do, if it's going to be painful and it's going to cost jobs, I don't think they want to talk about it. But it really is such a big unknown because you have some people who think that we are just getting ready to take this remarkable rebound, that we're going to look up and in January, we were going to go, well, that was a bad year, but now it's behind us. Most people think this is going to stretch for several years. No one is telling us be prepared for this size cut. It's just, it's, it's almost like somebody is whispering, hey, hey, come over here. You know, I'm not supposed to tell you this, but you better start making a plan. So, so let me help you put something, some things in perspective. So if we've got a $350 million budget that we would be asked to cut, and they said 10%, we want you to take 10%. I'm not saying they're going to. That's the kind of thing you're seeing in other states. Then we've got to cut $35 million. If we start out and we've got half of that taken care of by carrying forward this capacity, then we could turn around and say, now we want to take $7.5 million a year out of fund balance. And we could do that without great pain to us, without endangering the district. So now I've got, let's make it 17 and a half, I'm adding seven and a half. I've covered $25 million worth of that. Worst, absolute worst-case scenario, we've got $7.5 million in stipends that are one-time stipends. We have repeated them for two years now. Let's say, we could say we can no longer, we can no longer pay those stipends. And now you've eaten up seven and a half million of that. I guess what I would say about this is, I don't see that we could do much more at this time. I think we adopt this budget. I, I don't know what I would, we would find a way. If the board said, look, we want you to cut $5 million out of this growth, we'd find a way to do it. But it would set us back. And I feel like the budget we presented is allowing us to maintain pace and move forward. To go much below that would be, I don't think, in the best interest of the district. But we will be spending the next six months following this, trying to figure out what the state's going to do. And then we'll, we'll come back with recommendations.
And Keith, I was on the TASB School Governance webinar with the Deputy Commissioner, Dr. Cottrell, and he was talking to school board members about looking at the budget from a governance standpoint. And there was really nothing specific. I mean, the only thing he said, and I wrote it down verbatim, is to be extremely conservative. And that was the only explanation he gave. That's an echo of what Mike is saying.
Well, I mean, the, the response is no kidding. Or, you know, if you want to be more blunt, you can say something worse. But, and I'm glad we're doing that. I just remember how painful, you know, 2008, 9, 10 was. And this is going to be worse, I think.
Well, we hope that you're wrong.
Oh, but I tell you what, I, I don't think a V-shaped recovery is in the cards. I hate to be pessimistic, but I see it. And I know our client base and what people are being very cautious. And this is going to continue on. And, and we're lucky that most of the tax collections were made into February, like we normally do, at 98%. But Mike's right, this, the next year, I don't know that we're going to enjoy those kind of numbers. I hope I am dead wrong about the shape of that recovery and that it tracks a lot quicker. But it's, it's, it's just going to be a question of how this thing opens up. And if people feel comfortable, even though you open businesses and they're available to go to, will people go? So far, traffic, foot traffic is, is not where they were hoping it would be. But maybe if people start to hear, hey, that one vaccine is showing really good promise, other protocols that are being developed to deal with, so there's a lot of, lots, so many unknowns that for Dr. Fagan and for Mr. Seal and Mr. Gardner and the whole staff, you're shooting in the dark right now. And we got to, like you said, we're going to do the best we can and hope that we're wrong on the downside and that the upside takes care of itself, as they say in finance. But yeah, I, it's, yeah, I think it's going to be lovely.
Yeah, no, and, and look, I'm glad we're doing this. I'm glad, I totally support this. I mean, I'm the guy that remembers, you know, taking an hour and a half to sign termination letters to all of our new teachers. And then telling them we have to rehire, who we can rehire with the budget that we have. And so it was, it was a nightmare. And I'm just, I'm glad we're preparing for it. And we're doing the right thing, for sure. And you see where we go. But I, I think that, you know, how we have to look at this is, it's going to be worse than 9, 10, 11. So I really believe that, unfortunately.
Well, and I, I've had, we've had this conversation with principals, the leadership team, the teacher advisory. Everybody understands the circumstances. And we can't get any official word from anyone at the state level. People say things like be stingy, be conservative, don't spend your money, hold some back. And so that's, that's what we're doing. We're funding special education growth, we're, we're funding student growth, we're funding very minor increases in movement forward and personalized student success and safety, some of those things. You know, we're, we're funding things that we need to fund to function as a school district and, and nothing more. And we have been incredibly tight in our staffing projections and everything, all under this umbrella of there's no fat to be had. So we've got to be extraordinarily tight in all of our staffing. Rick, that's why, if you asked our principals, they'd tell you that our staffing sheets have never come out as late as they did this year. That's why, because we have scrutinized them over and over and over again to make sure that we're being as, as tight as we can, but still meet the needs of our students.
Good.
So I'm going to kind of go against the grain here and actually be positive. I, I'm expecting a V-shaped recovery. I, the first vote I took in 2011 was to furlough those 400-plus teachers. I didn't know what in the world was going on at that time as far as the budget. I just walked into it, that was the first vote I took. And, and with all due respect, I really, this doesn't feel, in my business, and this is what I do, this does not feel like it did in the recession of 2008. Because that recession was all, was 100% economic driven. And this recession has been, it has been virtually man-made, if you will, due to the virus. As we get a handle on the virus, as we get a handle on medications and so forth, the, the economy, in my opinion, is going to turn fairly robustly. It's not going to happen overnight. It's going to probably take place later in the year. But at the same time, I think it's going to be more of a V-shaped recovery. But with that said, you've got to put hay in the barn and prepare. In case I'm wrong, you, you plan accordingly to make sure that every student gets what they need, what they have to have to be successful. But you cannot, as you've already mentioned, you cannot be extravagant. You, you've got to bare-bone it and to, to prepare for the worst, but hope for the best. And, and I think the budget process that I've gone through has done that. So I just wanted to give y'all a positive, positive spin on, on what's happening out there. Thanks, Keith. Robert?
Well, no, no, that's fine. And I hope that that is correct. And I hope some of these things happen a lot faster than some people say. But Dr. Fagan, I just want to say, I'm glad that you're being aggressive. You and the team are being aggressive, especially in those areas of student success. And that, you know, things like the, I was actually going to hold a, sign up with the EBA about your, the quality-driven leader, data leadership with the data analysts. I think that, that's a great add, those kinds of things. And the fact that you're not being squeamish about saying, hey, you know, we need to, to keep beefing up some of these other programs that you're seeing work, that, because we need to keep doing that because we're, we're planning for the future and we're building on success. And yeah, I'm a little, you know, yeah, we're all a little nervous about what's going to happen on a macro level. But you know what, we still have to, and I agree with what Robert said and what Keith said. You know, we're just going to balance and we're going to hope for the best. But we need to keep pushing on those things. So I'm glad you were, I'll call it aggressive, you know, this environment, that you didn't back down. I said, no, you know, we need to do this stuff. And I'm telling you guys, if we want to continue forward and successful, we need to have these things, and we need to grow these things, or add a couple of things, yeah. So I'm glad that, to see that you, you have that.
Yeah, I didn't mean to be a party pooper. I mean, there's ever a time to discuss these issues, it's in a budget session for trying to plan the next year. And so, you know, I'm looking at this thinking, you know, I've lived through it. You know, I was on the board and we were dealing with all of these issues, having to cut. And that was every meeting, and it was miserable. And, and so, you know, I'm glad we're planning. I think we've made the right decisions here. You know, I'm, you know, I can't expect the state to, you know, try to figure this out now when no one knows where the economy is going to be a year from now. But it, you know, I think we're doing the right thing. I guess that's my point.
Here's my sign. Yay.
Well, I appreciate the support for the small incremental steps forward. I do think that that is part of what makes UMLISD special, and I, and I wouldn't want to lose that in all of this. And I think that we're doing it in a very conservative way. And I think that the, the budget as a whole works to value the UMLISD family and our students' needs. So it's not the budget I wanted. And in April, Mike will tell you that I had a whole different budget prepared. And he will even tell you, it took me a while to get to this place because I too am optimistic for a V-shaped recovery. But I do think that this is the responsible leadership budget, and that's what we've got to do.
Yeah, and I for one, you know, I really appreciate, you know, all three of you, Dr. Fagan. Yeah, and I for one, you know, I really appreciate, you know, all three of you, Dr. Fagan, Rick, Mike. Yeah, I think you started off the whole conversation, Dr. Fagan, with remaining whole is our key priority. And I really do appreciate the work that has been done.
Well, and I definitely think you, you guys, I mean, Dr. Fagan, you and your team have prioritized the bare bones needs and trying to keep our district whole. And I think you've done a beautiful job.
Thank you.
Not having any more discussion, we move to consideration of topics for future board business.
Madam President, I just have a question. Do we need to log into this district decision-making committee meeting? Or that's not something we have to do, right? On, what's it, Thursday at six o'clock? It was in a, it was to amend the District of Innovation Plan? That's not something the board needs to do?
No, it's to amend the District of Innovation Plan so we can offer a second health, health insurance option to the employees.
I understand, but who, so that's a committee outside of the, we don't need to be logging into that. Okay, so I'll make sure.
You do not need to. Okay, not, excuse me? Anyone? Okay, not having any topics for future board business at this time. We will now adjourn this meeting at six fifty-nine PM.